I'm sorry, we just didn't want to present Malendez just working up there. Think I lose my light frame or just don't work right now. Thanks.
One thing to note, if you would like to, that we didn't put in enough shuttle. We did hear some people who were watching the live feed about the microphone issue. We didn't really announce that Tuesday's meeting. So if you want to just let everybody know what happened.
Sure.
Issues.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call the BFG meeting to order and ask Clerk Washington to please call the roll. Here.
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 Thanks. And let the record show, we're joined by Councilmember Lightfoot Lupien, Councilmember Smith, and President Malendez is about one minute away. He'll join us before we start voting on anything. Let me also say for the record, we are having some audio problems in the council chambers. So for anyone who is listening online, we are going to do our best to make sure that people are using handheld mics if their mic is not working, and let the public know that we are working as quickly as we can to resolve these problems so that people can hear what's happening during our council meetings. Let's, we'll start with introductory number 312. And let me, let me start by letting folks know, we're joined by President Malendez. Let me start by letting folks know that I will be holding 312 at the request of Councilmember Patterson, who unfortunately was not able to be here today, but has some questions that he'd like to discuss with the administration with human resources. But either way, we will in fact amend 312. Well, actually, is there a reason for us to, Patrick, is there a reason for us to amend 312 now? Or we should take that up all at once?
You're certainly not required to amend it now. The committee could, but you could wait and do it later.
Okay. I think we'll just hold off until the full council meeting. But I would encourage people to ask their questions now. I have a couple of questions about 312. And Deputy Mayor Josean, I'm sure that Councilmember Patterson is going to be in touch with you directly. And for those listening at home, this is about an amenable agreement for undoing racism, community organizing workshops. Just a couple of questions for the administration. What, what year is this of us doing these? Does anyone know if Top other had, we've been doing it for a number of years now? Okay, and it's been consistent, the same number of workshops done? Pardon? None in 2020, you're saying? Okay. So maybe that'll just be a question that we ask in writing. It's just the total number of years that we've conducted these trainings. And I guess I'm just wondering to the administration, what is the, you know, I had the opportunity to take the training twice, certainly learned some informative things. I'm not sure that I recall there being any kind of feedback mechanism after the training. Maybe there was and I forgot it. But I guess my, my question would be like, what is the administration learning about these trainings? And is there a sense that these are going to kind of go on in perpetuity? Or is there some evaluative measures you're looking at?
Yeah, I think we'll cover that in writing. I will say that we've added a survey post-session to gather that sort of feedback. I'll also say, having had the opportunity to participate nearly two years ago, it was incredibly meaningful and by and large, that has been the feedback that we have received from folks. Very meaningful, very informative, at some points uncomfortable, but appropriately so. And so we'll address a broader context in writing, but at least wanted to put that on the record.
Great, thank you. My last question is just, I think what, what this particular organization does is probably fairly unique in the way that they conduct trainings. But I'm wondering, and again, this gets back to the evaluation. Is there, has there been an appetite over time to look at what other types of trainings there are? Or has there been just a sense that this is a good partner to work with, so we want to keep working with them? And of course, in writing is fine, Deputy Mayor. And I know Councilmember Patterson will have some questions. And let me invite any other council members to ask. Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't. Thank you. I was, I just, a statement and maybe a comment, or a statement with a comment. Originally, the reason why I can speak to this is because I was a part of the original group that started this particular training. It was a subgroup of us that started. A few of those people are no longer with us, but nonetheless, and originally, and I, the intent was to not only inform the, and we actually extended it. It was supposed to, originally it started with just senior teams. And then those senior teams had those change groups that it branched into. And that was part of the goal, was to embed this into the culture, if you will, of our city government and our city departments. And I'm glad to see that that's continuing. And from my understanding, from, from a brief conversation I had with the mayor via the elevator, that he was here a week or so ago, because they were extending it to some youth, from my understanding, which I think is also very incredible. So I just wanted to make that note that, you know, as one of the establishes of the beginning of this program, it's, it's great to see that this is continuing and hopefully it will continue beyond even this council, that it will be embedded, because undoing decades and centuries of racism doesn't happen overnight and with just one session, right? I think I sat through the session three times, because we were actually, we actually end up having a undoing racism chapter here for a while, that was going on for a while, because in order to, and then we were looking to have train the trainers that were actually from Rochester. But in order to do that, through the People's Institute, you have to have sat through so many of their sessions. Many of us had got halfway there. So it'd be interesting, and this is the question part, to see, are there any people that are in that process of maybe becoming the train, the trainer, and locally? And are we interested in, is there any interest in looking at that local chapter here that was started already? Letitia Doucette was a part of that, Dr. Lomax Campbell, where they were leading that process. And it'd be interesting to see if that's continuing as well, too.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'm wondering if you could give us some more specifics regarding the tools and knowledge that they'll be giving to low-income clients?
Councilmember Smith, can you use the mic so we can hear on YouTube?
Yes. Can I ask for a little more specificity? Because this says to give low-income clients tools and knowledge to prepare and recover from emergencies. Can we get some examples of what those emergencies are, along with the tools and knowledge?
Councilmember, that's a different piece of legislation. That would be 317. We're looking at 312 right now.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Okay, so I'm going to hold 312, but hopefully this council will have an opportunity just to discuss. I'm pretty sure all, all council members have had a chance to go through this training at least once. So it will, it'll be an interesting opportunity for us to discuss. And I'll move on to introductory number 317, authorizing an agreement with Consumer Credit Counseling Services. And I'll start with Councilmember Smith's question. Do you want her to repeat it?
Yes, so more specificity regarding some examples around what the tools are and examples of the emergencies.
So the goal of this partnership is going to be providing, can you guys hear me? So the goal for this partnership is going to be providing training to a variety of nonprofits serving low-income communities on financial preparedness tools. And so those things could look like a lot of what we do with our financial counseling program, things like saving, things like budgeting, as well as how to access a variety of resources post-disaster related to your finances. And I'll turn it over to Fred, our emergency manager, to talk about what some of those emergencies could look like.
Yes, so in terms of the type of disasters we're talking about, these are things per the Directive of the Grand Natural Disaster. So it could be flooding, it could be significant winter storms, ice storms. So there's natural disasters, technological disasters, if we were to have some kind of power grid go down and the impacts of that. So those are the types of disasters we're talking about.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Lupien? Do you need this?
Thank you. Have the nonprofits been selected?
We have a list of folks who have expressed interest, but they're not finalized.
Okay. When do you expect to select, make the selection?
Probably by November.
Okay. And when will the, when will the trainings start?
We're hoping to start them in November, and we're hoping to do one to two a month for the next 10 months or so after that.
Okay. Wonderful. And who will be responsible for the evaluation?
So Consumer Credit is going to be designing a survey that they will administer to the staff that attend the training. And then I think we are also exploring if we could somehow get those staff members to then distribute surveys to their clients, who might be getting education around this topic, so.
That's great. And I just want to say, I continue to appreciate that we have you and that someone is thinking proactively about these types of situations that we're going to encounter.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move forward with, I'd look, I'd like a motion on 317, please.
Move it.
It's been moved by Vice President Harris.
Second.
And seconded by President Malendez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion carries. Introductory number 318, authorizing an agreement and appropriation related to the Children's Savings Account Program. Kudos Angela and team for, for bringing in some, some dollars towards this. Councilmember Lupien, you have a question?
Including this $50,000, what's the total amount in the fund?
So right now, it would be a total of about $200,000.
$200,000. And have we selected a bank yet?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor, if you just want to say it, I'll, I'll repeat it into the mic.
Just real quick, could you please remind us of how much it'll take annually to cover the total cost of Children's Savings Account?
Can I get that to you in writing so I don't mess it up?
Amazing, thank you.
President Malendez?
Same question, thank you.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing that. I will take a motion on number 318.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion carries. Introductory number 319, amending a New York State Education Department Library Construction Grant Agreement and appropriating funds for the Rundle Memorial Library Exterior Building Envelope Repairs Project. We have a couple of handouts on our desk for this. I will just say to the administration, you know, I asked for a presentation of this, not entirely so that council can know what's going on, but also there are people who both sign in to watch this now, and also people who sign in to watch these meetings later down the line. And it's good for us to have these updates. You know, the, the administration can't provide a verbal update on every big construction project happening all the time. So I really would have liked to be able to have a presentation versus something in writing. It's, again, not for us, it's for the, the residents of this community. I'd really appreciate it if we could think about doing some very brief presentations on big projects. I specifically asked about Rundle, because everybody knows this is one of the biggest, most central buildings we have. It's an incredibly difficult building to do construction on, as I've heard countless times, because I have the privilege of serving on the library board as a council rep. And it's been going on for a very long time. Construction has been going on for a long time. But they're, and they're not behind schedule, it's just an incredibly complex project. So again, to council members, you have something on your desk to read. To the administration, maybe at a future date, when I ask for a presentation, we can just talk about what that would look like, just so that the public has a chance to hear about what's going on in a big, visible building. But does anyone have any, any questions about 319 itself? If not, I will just reaffirm to everyone that the Rundle Memorial Library is moving along at the pace that it was supposed to. Again, those windows alone are just an incredibly huge and complex and expensive undertaking. And a big shout out to the library team, in particular, Bree Harrison, who manages all of the capital projects there for the work that they're doing on that project. I do have a disclosure for myself as the council rep, but I may in fact discuss and vote. So with that, I'll take a motion on introductory number 319.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Did everyone hear who moved and seconded? Clerk, you good? Okay, wonderful. The, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion carries. Introductory number 320, authorizing an agreement related to foreclosure outreach. I will just share that this is something we heard about during the budget hearings. And I would ask Director Jones just to give us a brief sense of what's happening here.
Thank you. So what we're doing is, we are attempting to get a company to assist us with skip tracing. And that is just kind of getting good phone numbers, good email addresses, and also to post any type of notices that are sent by the Treasury Bureau and the Law Department to the actual properties. So, you know, in the past, we've had problems sometimes with outreach to our delinquent property owners. And, you know, the properties are then offered for sale at the subsequent foreclosure sale. Property owners come back and say, you know, we never received notice. We didn't know our property was in foreclosure. So this is an effort for us to do some additional outreach, to ensure that property owners are notified that their properties are in foreclosure. And quite frankly, that they're given ample opportunity to remedy the delinquency so that their properties are not sold.
In other words, it's the city going the extra mile to try to prevent foreclosures to the best of our abilities. Beyond just a written letter, but going directly to people's doors and trying to find people to call. So again, appreciate not just that it's in front of us now, but that there was very quick follow-up from the budget, and happy you found a vendor to do the work. Any questions from council on introductory number 320? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, so from, from what you said, it sounds like the key difference or the key additional service, services are finding their contact information and making calls, and also being able to post notices on their doors?
That's correct.
And city staff can't post notices on doors? I'm just curious about.
Well, we, we used to have city staff that would go out and actually visit the properties. We, we haven't done that in some time now. They're, they're really focused on kind of making phone calls and dealing with people that come in for tax agreements. So that's consuming a lot of their time.
Okay. And I noticed it's only for a year, which, which I think is good. And it'll, it'll give you a chance to, to evaluate after. So I'm, I'm very interested in seeing the outcome and some kind of comparison between what happened when the city did it versus what happens when the third party does it.
Of course, thank you.
I'll take a motion on introductory number 320.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion carries. And finally, introductory number 328, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion carries. And that concludes the work of the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee.
All right, I'm going to ask folks if they could please, sir, please, ma'am, make their way to your seats. I'm so glad to hear all of the conversations that are going on. I pray that everyone is well and that your families are well and that you are enjoying an extremely wonderful, wonderful, hot summer here in Rochester, New York. Before we even get going with the calling of our role, I'm going to take this time to just have a moment of silence. Of course, you know, I'm chairman of the Rock Against Violence Coalition, and we have had an extensive amount of violence, not just, not have had an extensive amount of violence, not just, not here necessarily, necessarily in Rochester, but across our country last month and leading up into this point in time. I just would like to have a moment of silence for that. Then after that moment of silence, I'm gonna have a Good and Welfare check-in real quick, and then we'll go right into our roll call and into our items for our agenda. Just a moment of silence, please, sir, please, ma'am. Thank you. Good and Welfare call, Chief Napolotano. I'm asking a question to see in regards of how the firefighters are doing. Our understanding was that there were several firefighters that were injured, and I didn't want to tweet or put out something like that. I wanted to ask you, you know, face-to-face and officially on how are they doing?
They're doing well. All of them were released by nine o'clock the other evening. We had our Health and Safety Battalion Chief and Captain of EMS were with all the firefighters that were injured at the two medical facilities. We received confirmation today that three of them will be returning back to work in the next day or so. We did have four burn injuries, three environmental injuries from heat stress and related, and one wrist injury. But they're all in good spirits. I've talked to them several times each. They're eager to get back, which is typical of a firefighter, and they're doing well. So thank you for asking, and our medical case management is handling all the follow-ups, things of that nature. So they're in good hands, and they're eager to get back to work.
Well, let them know that our heart prayers are with them, and we're thinking about them, and I'm glad to hear that everyone is doing well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. At this time, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lupien.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe is excused. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're also, for the record, we're being attended the rest of our council members with the exception of Councilmember Monroe, who is excused. We, you should have on your desk council members, the questions and the memos from the public safety on your desk, as well as information from, that was received from PAB as well, this quarterly report. And we will take any additional questions before we conclude our meeting this afternoon. But we'll go right into our business before us at hand with introductory number 321, Amending a Bond Ordinance for 2024, 342 of the City of Rochester, New York. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Councilmember Martin.
Just out of curiosity, could you just please send a picture of what this item looks like?
Of course, in writing.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Introduction number 322, A Bond Ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, Authorizing Issuance of 500,000 Bonds of Said City to Finance the Cost of Replacing Two In-Ground Lifting Systems for Emergency Vehicle Maintenance at the Public Safety Training Facility. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number 323, Appropriating Funds for an Armed Rescue Vehicle. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
In the introduct, it says that the armored vehicle has been used in incidents of civil unrest. Can we get an idea of those incidents? And what is the policy regarding the use of that vehicle?
Yes, so the civil disorder, that would be if we have intel or intelligence that there is going to be an event with a large amount of people, we will respond off-site, not onsite, just in case there is an incident, active shooter, a riot, violence, any type of violence. So we do respond to those for public safety and for officer safety. I do know we reported you, we gave you data on the deployment, and it's 14 incidents in 2024, and 20 incidents in 2025, and any policy on that I can provide.
Can we get, yeah, can we get dates and descriptions of those incidents? And, you know, I'm gonna, and I would appreciate the transparency, but I also am gonna be a no on this. It is not that long ago that I remember being in a war zone at the Main and Exchange, and that vehicle was used against peaceful protesters.
Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, how many armored vehicles does RPD have?
We have the one that's 20 years old at this time, and then I believe there is, I think that's the only one we have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Could you send an image of it to us following this meeting? And in support of efforts to demilitarize RPD, I will also be voting no.
Any other questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. Now we get ready to vote. Roll call vote, please. I'm sorry I have to do this with these mics.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
No.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Monroe is excused. Councilmember Patterson.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, correct? Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right. Introduction number 324, Authorizing 2025, 2026 Budget Amendments. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns?
Yes, thank you. I want, one piece of this I have some questions on, which is the overtime pay. The hotspot policing, can we get an idea of what that entails along with an understanding of what the network investigations means? I know it focuses on networks that create the infrastructure of offending, but I want to understand what that is a little bit better. And with the known gun offenders and group violence intervention, how does that differ from like the work of Pathways or Advanced Peace? Yep, those are my questions.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion. Councilmember Patterson. They want to hear you online, that's why, Mike. They gotta hear you online. Councilmember Patterson.
Are we on introductory 324?
This is correct.
Okay, I was just checking, because, okay. So this is about improving the criminal justice response grant, and Eliotus, that's what we're doing?
No. I was on the wrong one.
Okay. She's on the wrong one.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
She's on 325. So scratch that, or keep that, but we'll save it for 325. 324, Authorizing 2025, 2026 Budget Amendments. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Introduction number 325, Authorizing Agreements Related to 2025, 2026 Gun Involved Finance Eliminating Grant. You want to re-ask your question?
Did you get those questions?
I did. We'll provide the answers to you.
Thank you. A no for now, pending answers to my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Martin.
Could you provide the job descriptions and attached salaries for the RIT positions affiliated with GIVE? And this is, I guess, for the administration generally, or whoever put this together. Is it possible to separate some of this? Because there are elements of this, like supporting the HBCU classics that I would like to support, however, there are other pieces, like hotspot policing, which we know disproportionately targets poor black and brown areas that I couldn't in good conscience support. So is it possible to separate it to give council members the options to support pieces that they want to support and not vote for pieces that they have issues with?
You're voting on the acceptance of a grant, and the grant has a number of purposes for which it can be used, and that's the administration's prerogative. So it's just got to be an up or down vote on acceptance of the grant.
So I know procedurally, like there, you can make a motion to separate items, and we considered that previously when we looked at the Neighborhood Ambassador Program that was coming from, I think, the same pot of money. Could you distinguish that possibility there and why that can be done here?
I think council, as a legislative body, always has the opportunity to amend legislation. So if you have a way to amend this in a meaningful way, you can certainly work with your colleagues to come up with that amendment. But what you're doing is accepting a grant, and I don't know what the implications of that would be if there's just a partial acceptance of a grant. I also don't know that in accepting a partial grant, that council would actually have control over how that is ultimately spent by the administration, but certainly happy to think through those issues.
Absolutely. So in essence, it is possible for council to work together on considering ways to amend this legislation?
That is always one of the things you may do.
Great, thank you. So as it stands now, and my primary reason for voting against this now has to do with hotspot policing, significant bodies of evidence and data about the harms, again, on marginalized communities. Though there are some good things in here, for me, I cannot in good conscience support any efforts to do hotspot policing in my community.
Appreciate, yes, council.
Just for clarity, Patrick, the question Councilmember Martin asked, the time we, the splitting out of the ambassador program, that was our choice of how to use opioid settlement dollars. This is a grant given to us by New York State that this body does not have authority to figure out how is used. We have the authority to figure out if we receive the money or not. So I just, I don't want to walk down the path of splitting it if splitting it is not an actual viable thing, because the grant was already submitted by the administration. Can you, can you give us an answer in writing if we can in fact split anything out here?
We can give that answer in writing, yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm...
Just a procedural question. This is the acceptance of the money. There should be maybe other legislation that would come to us for the use of the money?
I think it would depend on the specifics of the use of the money, so if we...
Well, I mean, the ones that you have outlined here?
We could have that discussion, certainly, right? If there's a PSA, for instance, that we're using, we have to come to you for the PSA if it's over 20 grand per the standard PSA policy, et cetera. So there would be certain triggers to come back to council, yes.
If I may, I believe it's acceptance and use of the GIVE grant. So this is both in the legislation, I believe.
Got it.
You see and use.
Yeah, so at least that, those two functions theoretically could be split out.
To the administration, Deputy Chief, is this, have we received this grant before?
Yes, we have.
Right. So I'm gonna move forward with this, being that it's not, this is not a new procedure that we typically go through. We've gone through this, it's been several years now, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken. Deputy Chief, is that correct? With our, this GIVE grant? Yes.
That is correct.
So I would, I would offer for consideration that my colleagues and others would, and I agree, that we have the power to sever and to amend. And I think, being that these things are recurring, that we should look further ahead and prepare ourselves properly if those are things that we want to consider to do in the future. But for now, as past practice, as we have, and GIVE does some great work in our community, I support this, and I would like to move it forward, and I'm asking for a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we vote. I'm calling for a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien.
No for now.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Monroe is excused. Councilmember Patterson.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, introductory, motion carries. I'm gonna open up the floor at this point in time for any, I think we had a few questions from our council members.
I have one then.
Councilmember Lightfoot, I think we have introductory 326. We have one more, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, thank you. We have one more, I'm sorry. Introduction number 326, Amending an Intimisible Agreement with the County of Monroe for Explosive Storage. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, can you just send us a copy of the written agreement?
Of course.
Yes. Any other questions, comment?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now I will open up the floor for additional questions from the Public Safety Committee to, from our council members, starting with Councilmember Lupien.
Yeah, I just had a procedure question. We've had a number of kind of high-profile emergency situations lately, a plane crash, the fire, officer-involved shooting. What is the notification, the chain of command? Who gets called when? How big does it have to be in order for the chief, like if you, the Tent City Fire, was that something that like rose to your level where you would respond?
Yeah, I think my thought here is we'll provide more detail in writing, but certainly the Tent City Fire is something where the chief was on scene.
Uh huh.
The mayor was aware, I was called. We're happy to kind of walk you through each of those events and maybe how notifications work.
Yeah, and I guess I want more clarity on when does council get notification? Do President Melendez, does President Melendez and the, you know, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, that has happened under previous administrations where something like this, we'd get a notification and a heads-up? And so just kind of understanding where we fit in the process.
Yep, absolutely. Happy to provide that.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
So this is maybe two to three-part question. So I think maybe this is for you, Director Pierce. When RPD releases, or RPD, when RPD releases statements, or the chief does a press conference regarding an officer-involved shooting or an incident they were involved in, are you involved in shaping the narrative? Or what is your role in what the public ends up viewing and seeing?
The public information officers in both police and fire speak to the incidents that relate to the emergencies they respond to. I get involved on high-level things, obviously, large, significant events after the fact. When we talk more future, when the mayor is involved, I'll be involved. For anything having to do with law, HR, other things that are not directly tied to incidents, then I'm on point.
Okay, that's helpful. So in reviewing a lot of the, and this may then go to RPD, in reviewing a lot of the information that's come out following the officer-involved shooting, and talking to people who were at the scene, family members, it was clear to me that a part of the body-worn camera footage was missing, but that was never shared with the media. Can you explain why that wasn't shared? Or why it wasn't told to the public that the officers involved did not turn their body-worn cameras on at the start of their interaction with the man who was killed?
So I think that was four or five questions all rolled into one.
Thank you for being able to count. I'm asking RPD a very specific question, and I'm very interested in getting the answer.
As RPD's council member, I'm responding to that question. You can put your question in writing, please, and we'll provide a written response.
No, I want to have a discussion about what I'm asking for. Are you able to set up a meeting to discuss that? Because that is a very significant issue. You put out a narrative that is missing a very important element, and in the narratives you're putting out, you're saying we're focused on transparency and accountability, yet you fail to include that very important fact of something that's missing and what's being shared with the public. So I think that's worth having a discussion about, and I'm happy and willing to meet separately and have that discussion, but that's not enough. I need an explanation.
We'll take the questions in writing, and we can have a discussion about whether it makes sense to sit down and discuss it. As to the body video of the officers on the scene, the entirety of that video was released, none was withheld. If you have questions about when that video was activated, you and I have already had a discussion, that that is something that the internal investigation will look at.
So to be clear, I'm asking about the narrative that was put out in the media, right? Do you want me to repeat the question I asked? Why was that part obscured? Why was that not shared? There's been, it's been weeks since it happened, and at no point has the administration come out and said, "Okay, this is something that's missing, and this might be the fault of the RPD." That's just obscured from the narrative, and I'm asking why. Again, I'm happy to have that conversation. My question is very clear.
Councilmember Martin?
And we can continue.
If you would indulge me, thank you for the question. And this is what, as Chair, this is what I'm asking how we move forward with this. I would like for you, please, to get the questions to administration and council, so we want to be aware of these, what the questions are. Answers come back to, through our process, through all of council. because all of, all of councils on public safety. Then I'm gonna ask, within two weeks, for council to be briefed, entire public safety council, whoever is gonna show up, right? To be briefed furtherly and have additional, even if that means we have to go to executive session, whatever, it's fine. But I would like, within two weeks, to have that briefing to all of council in regards to after the questions have been asked and answered, please.
Thanks, Chair Lightfoot, duly noted.
Thank you.
And thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Councilmember Patterson. I'm sorry, President Melendez, and then Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah, just on the subject, I would offer that if we're gonna be in session already for a general council meeting in a week and a half, on Tuesday, that we go in executive session at the end of that meeting.
That's, that's perfectly fine with me.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. Request to the fire chief and the fire department, the administration. Going forward, I would like to receive something akin to the shots fired report for the Rochester Fire Department. One of the things that's useful is it kind of gives us a good idea of what's going on. I have no idea of how many fires occur in this city. Can you hear me? I think it's on, yeah, okay. I have no idea as to how many fires occur in this city, any given day, any given week, unless I just happen to be driving by and I see you guys working. It would be nice to know how many fires you're working on a weekly basis, the level and the intensity of fires, you know? Obviously, the big ones we see, we smell, we hear about, but there are numerous small fires that we just don't hear about. And it would be nice to know what that reporting, what that response is. Wouldn't also be a bad idea if you could include your EMS runs, too.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah.
Is it okay if that's included in the monthly reporting that we're getting from, you know how we, I give you the... Is that, would that, if I asked them to include that number, is monthly, you want it weekly?
I would really like to. I don't see why they can't do it weekly.
I'm not saying they can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was, I was just trying to see if it was okay to do it monthly instead of weekly, but...
Right now, I'm getting nothing, so I'm not gonna make, you know, something, you know, the...
If it could be added in the, in the monthly updates to all of council, would that be, to start? Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Absolutely, we can do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. What's, I'm sorry, where you finished, Councilmember Patterson? Any, anyone, any other statements before we conclude this meeting? Councilmember Martin.
Final statement, just want to thank RFD. I've been following what's going on with the fires and all the work you've been doing to keep our community safe. So just thank you on behalf of our community, and you're greatly appreciated.
Duly noted, and agreed. All right, if there's no further business to be coming from the Public Safety Committee, we are adjourned. God bless you, everyone, enjoy the rest of your evening.